Element Committee Clerks, can we do a roll call, please?
Absolutely Chair. On the roll, Councillor Wong. Councillor Chu.
Here.
Councillor Dollywalt.
Here.
Councillor Pootmans. Councillor Walcott.
I'm here.
Councillor Carrick.
Here.
Councillor Sharp.
Here.
Councillor Wynes. Councillor Mann.
Here.
Councillor Trebo.
Present.
Councillor Spencer.
Here.
Councillor McLean.
I'm here.
Councillor Demong. Mayor Gondak. And Chair Penner.
I am here.
Thank you.
Okay Committee, just a little bit of a preview and for everyone watching, we're going to continue with public speakers. If we finish with public speakers this evening, we will go into questions of administration. We are going to do a hard stop at 9:30 tonight and we will eventually get a motion up here to return at 9:30 tomorrow morning. That is needed as our clerks team need their breaks. And we need to give them time and rest and they typically have work to do even after we leave chambers. So that is the plan. If we do make it to questions of administration tonight, I'm going to ask you all to think and consider something. And even for tomorrow, that we take turns in five minutes, you get five minutes to ask questions. At that point, we move on to the next person. Of course, you have unlimited turns to ask questions. But just to kind of keep the flow moving. And so that is what... So think about that. We're not there yet. Okay, I'm going to call some names and let's see who's here. Romello McDonald. Adriano Di Stefano.
Here.
Okay, Adriano, you are first in this panel. Philip Turnbull.
Hello, sorry, I'm here as well. Romello McDonald.
Oh, okay, Romello, I'll put you in this second then.
Thank you.
Okay, so Adriano Di Stefano first, Romello McDonald second, Philip Turnbull. Melanie Swales. Okay. Lisa Poole. Okay. And Flora Gillespie. Okay, so I'll put the three of you there then. So we will go... One sec, I'm just moving things. It will go Adriano Di Stefano, Romello, Melanie, Lisa, Flora is the order. So Adriano, go ahead. You are first. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your worship, Mayor Gondak, councillors, presenters that have presented before and after. It is an absolute pleasure to address City Council today. I've heard very, very many, very deep analyzed thoughts on this issue. I'm a native Calgarian. I was born in 1959. I've seen the city go through multiple changes, multiple times. I've seen a lot of pain in the city, namely during the period of 1980. At that time, there were two policies that came through to Calgary. It was the NEP and the MRB. NEP, short for National Energy Program. MRB for multi-unit residential building. Now, what happened in 1980, you can do research on that if you're not familiar. Do a Wikipedia search, it's six pages long. Read it. It's real easy to find. You could buy a house for a dollar. People lost their jobs. 10,000 engineers, geologists, geophysicists left Alberta, went to the US, they never came back. You couldn't find a job in engineering typically for 10 years. That's actually what happened during that period. Also, interest rates were in the 20s, 21%. Development went down south. Many, many developers lost their jobs. The largest developers in the city of Calgary went under. And that was the NEP part. You may say, what does that got to do with affordable housing? It's connected with multi-unit residential buildings. It was a policy at that time where developers would get a certain advantage to develop apartment buildings. That was stopped about that time period. Then, from then forward to present time, we do not have any policy really that's in that category that the MRBs existed. Now, there may be something fairly recent that I'm not aware of, but there was a major change in development of apartment buildings and of course, affordable housing. Now, where do we all go from here? Now, money is expensive. It's at higher rates. And we have our costs, namely carbon tax, and on and on, that spreads through everything. There's a common denominator here. There is a threat to affordable homes for people. The city Calgary depends on people. The question is, do we want to have a city where people can actually work? We want to be competitive globally. This is a global issue. There's no question about it. Now, who supplies the rental product for people that want to rent? Namely, about 60%, give or take a bit, are mom and pop organizations, are companies, are families, right? Not that big. They have costs. Typically, if they're a very small operator, after their expenses, their taxes passive income. And it is a very, very high rate, namely 46.67% on that number. Now, if they're larger companies, they're taxed at a totally different rate. The question is, who's going to provide supply going forward? It would be institutions, normally, right? There will be some mom and pops, but the problem is, they're getting taxed out of the market from that end. And on top of it, their expenses are going straight up. We're not going to talk about property tax insurance or maintenance. That's an automatic. But the issue is, who's going to put the product up? We also have immigration. It has been commented before. Is it 1 million, 1.2, 1.4 over a year? No system that I know of in this country can take that kind of immigration. We do have an issue with affordable housing. There's no denying it. The question is, who's going to put the product up? Now, the city has taken a very, very bold step to go and relax, or how would you say, upzone the inner city. Great idea. I've been involved with the city multiple times over many years in the past with regards to the ARP process here in Winston Heights. And it came to my conclusion that at one point, it was effective, but then eventually, the city just took over the process. Now, I need to believe that the planners and the people on this team that develop these recommendations are probably very, very skilled at what their job and they should be given the proper respect they deserve. And I believe many of the recommendations are quite useful. From the point of view where, as President, I'm a landlord, previous to that, I was a developer, contractor, and then a whole pile of other things. What I found out is that the tenants that rent, the percentage of income that they're paying, and they need two incomes to afford a home over their head, this is totally unacceptable. The writing's on the wall. We will not be competitive if we don't increase rental stock. And how are we going to do that? I don't believe that there's enough policies from the federal government to encourage rental development here in Calgary. And I think whatever they're proposing is actually just a very, very small piece of a pie that's a very, very large problem. It is a global problem. You can look at other cities all around the world and you will see essentially that they're all going through the same version of this. Was it COVID? Not really. This problem started way back, that I can remember from 1980, even before that.
Adriano.
The radio was on. Yes.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here with us to present. You can just hang on the line muted in case there's any questions. Romello.
Yes, hello.
Hello, we can hear you. Go ahead. You've got five minutes.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Romello McDonald. Calgary is in the middle of a housing crisis. No one's solution will fix this problem. It will take many solutions. I am in the favor of these recommendations set forth. Recently, many of you have heard about London getting 74 million from the feds to accelerate new construction. Calgary is not far away from getting similar funding. This funding rides on Calgary switching to RCG zoning. This, to me, is a no-brainer. The city is in desperate need of market and non-market homes. Many Calgarians are priced out of these central, more convenient communities and forced to live far northeast, deep south, or on the outskirts of the city. We need to build homes faster. More diversity in our housing market is needed, and it is needed in all parts of the city. RCG will help lower prices. Some have said it will only increase supply of $650,000 townhomes. I would like to remind people that we have record low levels of inventory. Increasing supply by thousands will indeed lower home prices, making them fair once again. RCG zoning will not take away homes. It will instead give landowners tools to get more use out of their land if they see fit. We need more market and non-market homes in all communities. Calgarians are struggling to keep a roof over their head and food on the table. Please vote in favor of these recommendations so that Calgary can remain the vibrant, thriving, affordable city that me and my family have grown to love. Owning a home in Calgary should not feel unattainable and families should not have to uproot their lives in hopes of lower rent or home prices, in some cases even leaving the city. The homeless and the cities most vulnerable also need housing solutions. And they need them now. We need to get the ball moving. It frustrates me that things are this bad and the biggest topic of debate is zoning. We need to shorten the Calgary housing wait times, increase space in shelters, and find replacement housing for the many people living in town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Romello, for being here with us. Just a reminder, if you are on the line waiting for your name to be called, if you can just make sure your device is muted so we don't have any noise coming in while other speakers are on the line. Awesome. Melanie, you are up next. Right here? Okay. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
My name is Melanie Swales and I'm here on behalf of the Brentwood Community Association. The Brentwood Community Association celebrates its 60th anniversary this year. And just like the rest of us, it's changed a little bit over that time. The community has changed a lot and it continues to change. We recognize that there are people struggling in all communities, including our own. We are trying to do our little bit to help. We have a Brentwood CARES group that started during COVID to help seniors or those facing hardships. We have a little free food library and we hold events to gather food or money to stock that pantry. We've heard many stories, just the same as you have over the past two days.
Melanie, can you just pause for one second? There is an echo. Jean, do you think you got it? Thank you so much. Okay, continue.
Okay. We appreciate the work and the effort that's gone into the HATF. There are 33 recommendations in the original version and over 80 in the revised version. The majority should be pursued and will hopefully result in some positive measures. But a few more definitely need revision, starting with the right to public hearings for all projects. Many students have spoken here in the past two days and I admire their guts to come here and stand up. Each of them were able to be here because the public hearing process not only allows for their input, but actively seeks to ensure that they know that they have that right. As university or college students, they understand the importance of free speech in the democratic process. As such, I hope they will understand why many CAs and Calgarians can't just accept all the recommendations and are troubled by the section of the HATF which seeks to remove that right. Recommendation 1H, advocate to the government of Alberta for legislative change to the MGA to allow for affordable housing to be defined in a manner that exempt it from certain planning process requirements such as a public hearing. Calgarians need to have a say on all decisions that impact them. The right to a public hearing is enshrined in the MGA, the city of Calgary engaged processes, the LOC and DP processes, so please do not remove it. Number two, rehousing. That's the slide that I have up. Our community is redeveloping and adding density, as these two examples show. These are two purpose-built rentals. The top one is nearing completion right now. The bottom one opened during COVID. We've also had over 130 DP applications for secondary suites, but they don't count for density, even though they do exist in our community. So we have many new dwelling units, but the rental cost of those units is beyond our control because they're all privately owned. Market rates dictate the rental costs. What this shows is that densification alone does not equal affordability. Blanket rezoning will also not bring affordability. If building a whole bunch of new condos would ensure affordability, then can more would be cheap by now. Three, expecting developers to act altruistically is naive. Developers are often much maligned, but we need developers. They provide capital, resources, experience, and ambition to build homes, regardless of the type of homes or the zoning. However, as a business and an industry, developers exist to make a profit through building. As such, a larger and more expensive building is likely to have a greater return than a small, bare-bones one. Given the choice between a high-end project and a low-cost affordable project, few developers would choose the one that produces a lesser financial return. Unless the city gets directly involved through regulating or through direct ownership, co-ops, things like that, there's simply no incentive for developers to provide the affordable housing. I had a slide, but I don't think I have time to put that up. So the final thing I'd like to address, and I was really pleased to see it addressed today, is short-term rentals. So I came across a CMHC study that was done on short-term rentals. And what they found, and you can read the highlighted points that are on there. The CMHC found that approximately 31,000 homes have been taken off the long-term market in Canada thanks to short-term rentals. That number is comparable to all vacant and available rental housing in some locations. I won't read exactly what's up there, but in Calgary, there appear to be about 6,000 short-term rentals. That's the registered, that's the registered ones that we know of. The top photo just gives you some idea. They're scattered all over the city. There are lots of them. The bottom photo I put on there because that's a map of the four towers at the Brentwood LRT. So when I Googled on Rent Faster to see how many places were available for rent, there were like three that came up. When I put it on Airbnb, there they are. So if you look at the rents, these are the daily rates, $216 a day, 274, 184. There are a lot of them and they're available right now. So until we address short-term rentals, that's a big problem. There's 6,000 units. If they weren't short-term rentals, they'd be available today for people to rent. Time is up. I will just end.
Thank you, Melanie, for coming. You can just have a seat and the chair is behind you if you want to just wait for your turn. Okay, we are going, we'll go to Flora next. Because I don't think Lisa's back, is she? Okay, go ahead, Flora.
Can you hear me? Is that the right distance? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gondak and Council. I'm Flora Gillespie and I'm grateful to speak to you this evening on the Housing Affordability Task Force recommendations. I want to truly applaud the majority of the Task Force recommendations and I commend the Task Force members from the affordable housing institutions who contributed. I first and foremost want to ask that the recommendations pertaining to blanket of zoning be voted on separately. In this way, council can ensure that the human right to housing can be dealt with in a dignified manner. For myself, today I'm going to speak directly to one of the recommendations, namely the blanket of zoning of the city to allow for 75 dwelling units per hectare. The densest rezoning proposal of any city in Canada. And actually, I believe it might be the most dense proposal in all of North America. On the surface, this missing middle housing strategy makes sense. Who wouldn't agree that more types of less costly housing are needed in low-density areas? A large percentage of the 500 people who took the city's survey just in this August thought it was a good idea. But how many Calgarians knew about the downsides of blanket of zoning when they took that survey? Why has administration not spelled out the downsides in a clear, plain language and transparent manner? Why are we in a public hearing and not having heard of these downsides and what they are being traded for, namely a return of minimal affordability? The public needs to understand if the positives outweigh the negatives and whether modifications are essential. Here are some of the less rosy points of blanket densification that Congareans and council may want to consider. Vanishing trees. When the priority is building as much as possible on every lot, trees don't have a chance. It's important to note that larger building footprints and increased hard surfacing will result in more trees being removed on individual lots. Similarly, city trees will be removed to provide new utility connections. Curiously, for a city that declared a climate emergency in 2021, there's no mention of the impact of tree loss on climate change or heat domes or any promise that the impact will be tracked or compensated for. Strained utilities. Nobody cares about sewers and electricity until they don't work. This plan will stress both those systems and I suspect the solutions will add cost to this type of housing. The increase in the number of units and impermeable surface will put pressure on an already strained sewer system as additional water runoff, volume, and additional sewage discharge enters the system. These multiplexes will also require an electrical upgrade. How does city administration expect to distribute that cost? Will it be equitable? Will it be tacked on to an already bloated and maxed billing system? Higher land values. Adding density increases land value. Upzoning also leads to land speculation. It's a financialization of our housing stock. We've heard many stories over the past two days that show the results of increased financialization. We know that in Q1 2023, 30% of new housing was purchased by investors. Yet, the plan is not contemplating any actions to curb speculation. Curbing short-term rentals, such as was done in both Montreal and New York City recently, is not on the table. As we heard today, 6,000 Airbnbs could instantly increase this housing stock. Nor is land value capture been contemplated. Lack of affordability. From such diverse experts as BMO's economist, Robert Kavchik, Vancouver's recent city staff report to its own council on its own densification plan, and planning experts such as Patrick Condon and Andy Yan, the evidence that this new housing will bring affordability is truly underwhelming. While the cost of new multiplex units will still be out of reach for many households, these new options will not cost less than the ownership housing options they are replacing. Politicians and advocates have been pushing the benefits identification for years with the negatives getting little attention. Staff has the duty to spell this out to residents and residents should have a chance to consider what that will mean for their neighborhoods. Do we want an untested, citywide plan that would diminish the tree canopy, cause parking problems, boost land value, strain the infrastructure, all for limited affordability?
Flora.
Thank you.
Yep, great timing. Thank you so much. Has Lisa made it back yet? I don't see that. So we'll take, we'll do questions of this panel then. So that was Adriano, Romello, Melanie, and Flora. And Councillor Chu, you are first for questions.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Chu, we can't hear you. Can you get a little closer to your microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Hmm, it's a little better.
Okay, let me turn out the volume. Is that better now?
Yeah, please just speak as loud as you can.
Okay, thank you. So my question will be for Mrs. Melanie Swales, please.
She's at the microphone. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So in your presentation, PowerPoint, I see some apartment buildings. Assume that's Northland Mall development. And because, I recognize that because I drive there, I bike there quite often during the summer. Can you... Can you talk about that I remember during that time, the Brentwood Community Association is in strong support of that project? And could you please tell us about the public hearing process during that time?
Sure. So we've got two different projects on there. I'll just talk about the top one, which is the, that one there that you see. That's a redevelopment at Northland Mall. It's a purpose-built rental. It's about 240 units, I believe. There's a really good variety of units in there. There's some three bedrooms, there's some 400-square-foot micro-units. It's a mix of types of units on every floor. So it is a purpose-built rental. It's two separate buildings. And one of the things I think that shows the importance of public engagement on this one was the original plans for this building were for one U-shaped building. You can see there that there's one building that's almost completed and then you can see in the back another building. They're both six stories. The other building is just under construction and nearing completion right now. So the original plan was for a giant U shape. You can't kind of see the back of them. Now, it's like two L-shaped buildings. And the space that you see in between the buildings, that came about as a result of a lot of community discussions with the developer. We felt that if it was one long building, it would take up an entire city block and you wouldn't be able to get through that space. It would be safer if you could get through there. It would lead to connectivity for pedestrians. There were a lot of things in there. The developer initially said it would be more expensive to build two buildings with elevators and things like that. But he did agree with that, that it would be more pedestrian-friendly and things. So we've got two buildings now and there's actually a space you can walk through the middle. It's actually going to be a really great project. And we've supported this project fully. We've worked really well with the city and with the developer on this one and we've had full support of it. We've had a lot of engagement into it and a lot of feedback into it. We think that this is a really good example of how a project can work really successfully. It's in a good location. It doesn't have an impact as far as shadowing or massing on adjacent. It's redeveloping our mall, revitalizing our mall. So it's just an all-around really good project.
Thank you very much. And is there anything else you would like to say?
Well, I guess one thing is that it's a purpose-built rental. So the condos that we have, the bottom one here is the Brio and that's over at the Brentwood LRT station. That one opened during COVID. That's a 12-story. And behind it, you can't see them, but you're probably all familiar with the yellow, orange, red, and green buildings as well. So those buildings were built as condos. And then those buildings were sold to owners and then the owners, in a lot of cases, are sub-leasing or sub-renting those buildings. This Brio is a purpose-built rental as well. So the advantage on both of those is that they have onsite management, onsite control of them. But they also aren't being used as short-term rentals. They really can't be. There's rules around, they're made for just people renting them and there's management onsite that checks it. The other buildings, the four buildings that are there, they were bought sort of in a peak period and there are a lot of Airbnbs in those units. And I mean, that's within the owner's right to do that. But these ones will probably end up providing more housing that's long-term.
Thank you. And during your presentation and basically two days of presentation, I noticed is that people talk about location, location, location. Like certain location is good for higher density, for example, on this one. And that's my, in a way, one part of my takeaway. Would you say that's the facts, the location is important? For example, LRT, if that's LRT, like Brentwood LRT station, there's lots of high-rise buildings. And the Brentwood Community Association actually very supportive of that. Can you address that a little bit?
Well, we haven't seen any new plans for the Brentwood LRT for quite a while. There was a proposal brought forward in about 2014, 15, 16 to redevelop the co-op site. But the problem with that one was there were some major flaws in the application. And to give you one example, if you're familiar with the four buildings at the Brentwood LRT, the yellow and the orange one are 61 meters high. The green and the red are 40 meters, higher, 41. The station ARP allows for up to 90 meters in that area. The proposal that was originally brought forward was for 146. So they want a full 56 meters above the maximum that was allowed in a station ARP, which was really pretty crazy, actually. And it didn't go through. There were a lot of other problems with the layout and everything else. But we recognize that there's going to be development around this station and I think it's a good place to develop things. We have a station ARP that I hope will still be deemed relevant, even though they're not really doing new ARPs anymore. But there was a lot of time and energy spent by the community in creating that document and it does still exist, so.
I appreciate that. And that'll be all my question. I just want to say thank you for your work. I just want to say thank you for, for your work on the Brentwood Community Association, and Brentwood is lucky to have you. Thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wines.
Thanks. Melanie, I was hoping we could get a copy of that letter that you were showing about short-term rentals?
Oh.
You posted it up quickly, so I didn't really get a chance to read it. I was just wondering if clerks could grab it and photocopy it?
The clerk did grab it right now.
Okay, can you, will you be able to put it, pass it out? In your research of short-term rentals, what have you been finding for major cities in Canada and housing stock?
It's funny because it actually first, the short-term rentals actually first came to my attention in smaller towns rather than in the bigger cities. I think the cities could absorb it for a while without people noticing the effect of it. I'm going to use an example out of Jasper. I have three family members that live in Jasper or have lived in Jasper in the past. So what happened there is about 10 years ago, they started doing something that was called approved accommodations. And so what happened was people could rent their homes for a very short-term basis for a lot more money than they could for a long-term rental. And so the impact of that was where workers used to be able to rent basement suites in Jasper, they were none available anymore. And recently, somebody wrote an article that was called Jasper Has Hundreds of Airbnbs, But Not A Single Place To Live. And I think that's sort of where it came to my attention. And then I started reading up more and more on them. And, you know, when we see that there's thousands and thousands of them, New York's got a real huge issue with that, and some of the communities have tried to figure out ways to regulate them. And then this document from the CMHC, there's, there's a really detailed document there, and actually, there's a, the clerk has copied it, but on the second page, there's links to the, the research and to the detailed research. And there's a section there, "Helping Cities Create Policy Around Short-Term Rentals." And it says there that the professor who did the study and his team would like to use their insights to help cities create policies around short-term rentals. And they've, they've been looking at, you know, what are some of the things that, that we could do? And there's, there is some good ideas.
Do you have a couple of close notes, ideas that you've come across?
Well, one of the ones that I read was, you have to kind of find the sweet spot of where it makes sense to have a short-term rental versus a long-term rental. And I saw 90 days bandied about once. So for example, on the, the document that I showed you with the Brentwood towers, it looked like the average going rate was somewhere around $200 a day. So at $200 a day, 30 days a month, that would be $6,000 that they could rent that out for if it was busy every day of the month. So $6,000 for one month rent, whereas you could probably rent the same units for $2,000 if you rented them on a long-term basis. And so what they suggested was that, A, these things all need to be regulated, and I know council's bringing it forward for, short-term regulations are coming forward in fourth quarter, I believe, of this year for, for looking at that. But somehow you need to find the spot where the owner wants to put it on the long-term market because he can't make enough money. And it's, if it's only 90 days, in that example, if he's making 6,000 per day, he's only making 18,000 in total would be his maximum. And at that point, it might make more sense to put it on the long-term market and get, you know, $2,000 a month. So they, they looked at, you know, you have to kind of, probably are never going to be able to sort of eliminate them totally, but have regulations around renting them, have regulations around inspecting them. There's also been some thought to, some kind of a tax in the same way as you have a hotel tax. And then the money that comes out of that tax goes into a fund for affordable housing or creating other housing. So this, this study is excellent. I mean, the CMHC did its homework on this. It's quite a long report.
I feel like you're reading my mind for my motion or my amendment I'm bringing. Because would you be surprised that they're advertising Calgary as a strong market to buy short-term rentals as investment properties in across Canada?
Actually, the Globe and Mail had a, you know how they always do their housing section, and they do an apartment or something that's, that's for, for rent? And they, or for sale. And they used one out of Penticton, and they used one out of Calgary. And they said, "Other cities like Kelowna and Vernon are starting to crack down on short-term rentals. Penticton still doesn't have any rules, and neither does Calgary." So investors are snapping them up in those cities because they know they can do them for longer than they can in markets that have cracked down on them.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Chabot.
Ms. Swales? Sorry. I, I could have sworn I heard you say something about co-op housing and how it was affordable. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
So I, I found, I'm talking to people in Rutland Park, and you did have somebody from Rutland Park speaking here yesterday. And they have a Sarsie Meadows Housing Co-op. And if you know, sort of between Richmond Green and Mount Royal College. And it's a large unit, it has, I'm going to put that down, 380 units and 1,100 residents. But the part that I want you to look at is the maximum housing charge, a two-bedroom for 974, a small three-bedroom for 1,000, a four-bedroom for 1,054. And I, when I saw this, I thought, all of these people that we've been hearing from in the last couple of days that have these rents and these, these fees that they can't afford, I mean, wouldn't this be fabulous? There is a waiting list for it now. There's a, you know, it's obviously a very popular thing. But what I've heard from the people in Rutland Park, too, is that it's, it's a very valued part of their community, and it's a very stable part of the community. People move in there and they stay because their rents are reasonable. It's not one where they have to move every year. And I listened to a lot of speakers over the last day or two, talking about, you know, they only can stay in a place, and then their rent goes up, their rent goes up by a ton. This is a very stable one. And at the bottom of this, I also have another example for attainable homes. The best example I know of is where the old Sunnyside Greenhouses used to be in Bonnais, kind of kitty corner, at the bottom of Sarsie Trail. There's an attainable homes. And the way that that one works is that people may be able to afford the monthly payment, but not come up with the down payment. So they have a program where they help you with the down payment. You basically make the monthly payments, but you don't need the big upfront down payment to, to get together. And then you get into a home as well. So I'm, I'm including these because I think the city has to be directly involved. Like, the developers, to create housing when they're for-profit models, there's got to be profit made, built into that, and it's what the market will bear. Some of these models, I'd love to see more of this.
So they're basically set up as cost recovery types?
Yeah, I, on this one, you purchase a share, like on the, the Rutland Park one. I'm not, you know, that familiar. It'd be Leanne Ellis and other people from Rutland Park could tell you more about it. But there's a share price that you pay of 2,900, half paid on acceptance of the unit, the other half on move-in. And it sounds like a similar model to the attain homes, where you're making the monthly payments, and it's, you know, you, you're paying monthly, but you don't need the big upfront. And then you can't make a profit on it at the end of the day. So I think there's one model I'm very familiar with because my brother lives in one in Jasper. And the way that that one worked is they built a co-op, and there's all kinds of restrictions on it. You had to be a Parks Canada employee, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't sublease it, you couldn't rent it out, you couldn't, that kind of thing. And then the way it works is you buy into the unit, and you make your mortgage payments and everything else. But at the end of the day, when you go to sell it, if you sell it after 10 years, you can only sell it by the amount that it would have increased by inflation during that time. So you can't flip it for double as much, or you can't flip it for 100 grand in a, you know, a short time period. It's very stable, and it goes back into the co-op. You can't, you can't buy into it to make a massive profit and flip it.
Your only appreciation is, is as a result of inflation?
Yeah, I think, that's my understanding of how it works, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. No further questions.
Councillor Wong.
Thank you. Ms. Swales, sorry. You cited a number of different suggestions that we need to look at, and the very first one was around public hearings or public input, right? And without repeating that, I'm going to reverse it the other way. Can you imagine a world where there was no public hearing? What would the effects be on future development of land?
Well, I think that the public hearings serve as a little bit of a way for the developers to also create physically nice projects or projects that they think are going to be more accepted into the community. I mean, if the only, if you know you're automatically going to get your DP approved, you're maybe not going to pay as much attention to articulation, or finishes, or how, how nice it's going to look, or how it's going to impact adjacent neighbors. You are going to build the form within what the land use bylaw allows, but maybe not with as much consideration as to input from the community. Does that sort of answer that?
Yeah, no, it really does. It really does. Because you're, you're right, your, your limited input will give you a limited.
Well, I just look at that, that building at Northland as a really good example, that there was a lot of feedback on that one with even things like where the, where the bike paths go through, and where, you know, the bike path connectivity over to Delhousy and things. The residents are the experts on their own community. They know how the building is used, they know the area, they know how they walk through there. And, you know, that's why we knew we wanted to walk between those buildings to cut across to Walmart. Like, you, you know the thing, and, and the developer doesn't necessarily know that, especially if they're not, you know, local or something like that, right? So I think the public input is always really important.
Okay. The second thing you made reference to was secondary suites are not counted as a unit, right? Now, what's, being a member of Brentwood Community Association, do you know your population, housing units, quantity, and ratio?
No, not off the top of my head, and I can't say I do right now.
Okay.
No.
I'm just going to suppose that if you were to add this, add the number of units, secondary suites into the unit count, you'd have an entirely different densification, obviously.
Well, one of the things I know, we have a, a member of our development team who loves spreadsheets, and he keeps track of every application, he keeps track of how many bedrooms they have, he keeps track of everything that we have on them. We know that the average, we have like 2.68 or 2.74 bedrooms, because most of the applications that we see have three bedrooms in the basement. So we don't know how many they have in the upper, but they have three. So when we have added 130 units, and on average, they have at least two, maybe three bedrooms, we know we've added at least, you know, 260 to 300 bedrooms. If those were RCG homes, that would be the equivalent, I can't do the math on the minute, but that would be the equivalent of, of a lot of different homes. But it's kind of this density that doesn't count towards it. So it gives the impression that we're in exclusively R1, you know, a lot of R1 homes in an area, but it doesn't count that really a lot of them have two, two dwellings, an upper and a downstairs. And the downstairs often has two or three people in it. So it's not just, you know, grandma living downstairs or something. There's a lot of density that's there, it's just not really counted towards it for, as far as development goes.
Right. The other part of Brentwood is, again, when you take a look at the number of schools you've got there, or proximity to libraries, I know as a former librarian yourself, when you, when you take a look at the, the count, the official count of number of units versus adding secondary suites in there, do we have enough amenities to satisfy Brentwood?
I think Brentwood's probably more stocked than anything. We have seven schools in Brentwood, 11 if you include Charleswood. We have high schools, junior highs, public, separate, French immersion, you know, we, we have probably more schools than any other area of the city. And that's one of the things with these towers over at Northland. When we provided input in them, we, we also wanted to ensure that there were, you know, three-bedroom units, that they weren't all going to be micro-units, because we think it'd be a great place for families or kids, people with kids, or schools right across the street from it.
Okay. The last question is around, you've got secondary suites. What's your thoughts of backyard suites, carriage houses?
I think that council spent a lot of time creating backyards, the backyard suite guidelines. And I think that the guidelines, the guidelines were an attempt to make them fit in better into the area. We know that a basement suite is pretty much hidden from view, a backyard suite is not. Most of the backyard suites that we've seen have been on top of a garage, and usually a triple garage. So they're quite large. They're an 800-square-foot garage with an 800-square-foot second story on them. And they can be quite intrusive on the neighbors. So we have to count on the backyard suite guidelines to help us with some of, like making them fit in a little better. And we just took one to SDAB, and actually, the decision of the Development Authority was overturned, and it hinged largely on an external stairway that would have had a lot of impact on overlooking and directly into neighboring yards. And the guidelines indicated that, you know, outdoor stairways are not the desirable form, and that their access should be direct. This was not. So we know that backyard suites can be quite intrusive just because of their size, and because we're a largely bungalow neighborhood. So at the very least, we try and seek that the backyard suite guidelines are followed to try and minimize the impact on them.
Okay, good, thank you.
There are no more questions for this panel. Thank you all for coming today. I am going to call for the next group. Lisa Poole. Philip Turnbull. Craig Chandler.
Here.
Kate, Craig, is that Craig or Philip?
Craig Chandler.
Kate, Craig, you're going to be first on this panel. Anthony Cox. Anthony, you're going to be second on this panel. You can come have a seat and a chair. Zach Karim.
I am here.
Kate, Zach, you'll be number three on this panel. If everyone who's online, if they can just make sure they're muted until it's their turn to speak again. Gianna Cassell. Jonathan Hamm. Kate, you will be number four. Humera Palabroda.
I'm here.
Okay, you are going to be number five on this panel. Okay, so.
Thank you.
This panel, just so we know. Craig Chandler, Anthony Cox, Zach Karim, Jonathan Hamm, Humera Palabroda. And just a reminder, if it is not your turn to present and you're dialing in, just make sure your device is muted, and we will go from there. So Craig, you are first.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship and council members. I've been watching this interaction on the city of Calgary's housing strategy, and by most metrics, it looks like the Conservative Party led by Pierre Poliev will form Canada's next government. The CPC have come out aggressively in favor of rapidly growing Canada's affordable housing sector, going so far as to send a letter to the mayor and council from the shadow Minister of Housing, Scott Atchison, to support many of the recommendations outlined by the Affordable Housing Task Force. A line from Minister Atchison's letter that summarizes perfectly where we're at reads, "Over 60% of Calgary is zoned for single-detached housing only. How can you build the future when restrictive zoning makes it illegal to grow? If it's illegal to build the homes people need, they won't get built, no matter how fast you issue a building permit." Now, house prices are rapidly rising because of the carbon tax, inflation because of massive deficits and debt, and the, with the emission targets Trudeau's laying down, us buyers another 35,000. Let's look at this through a fiscal business-friendly lens and better understand what Calgary is positioned to miss out on if we don't firmly commit to reducing the housing divide. There are federal funding opportunities that council is leaving on the table if they don't do everything they can to ensure more building is happening quickly to address the housing crisis we find ourselves in. Quite frankly, we should be trying to get as much money back into Calgary from Ottawa. Pierre is putting a private members bill forward on Monday, and his plan, the housing, housing plan states, "It's time to build homes people can afford by removing government gatekeepers to free up land and speed up building permits." It includes some of the following promises. Big cities must increase their home building volume or risk facing financial penalties or having portions of their federal funding withheld. There will be a direct link between the number of dollars big cities receive in funding for infrastructure and the number of homes being built. Pre-approval of building permits for high-density housing on all available land surrounding transit stations in order to qualify for federal project funding. Financial bonuses for municipalities of free up land, speed up building, and increase the number of homes being built. Big cities that block development are found to be gatekeepers for egregious cases of NIMBYism, will face steep penalties and federal funding withheld. And of course, it's not just the Conservative government pushing for these types of financial penalties and rewards. The Liberals also have housing initiatives that Calgary could lose out on if we don't overtly demonstrate that we are doing everything in our power to take this crisis seriously. We don't have to look far to see the consequences of not approving these recommendations, as Vancouver and Toronto are two shining examples of global unaffordability. Calgary's competitive edge has always been our affordability, but that is quickly slipping away as we watch housing costs skyrocket. How do we maintain a competitive advantage as one of the world's most livable cities if we no longer have affordable as a benefit? How do we conserve our world-class reputation as a great place to make a living and a life if we don't intervene and prevent Calgary from becoming the next Vancouver? How do we attract new businesses if there's no place for employees to live? Without these recommendations, our reputation for opportunity comes under threat, and we lose our ability to attract and retain business and talent. I'm troubled by how some members of this council, who purport to be pro-business and support small government, have proven to be the very gatekeepers they rail against. The recommendations put forward by administration is a big step in addressing housing affordability, and in the same motion, cut red tape to allow businesses to operate more freely with less costs. The recommendations put forward by administration is a big step in addressing housing affordability, and in the same motion, cut red tape to allow businesses to operate more freely with less government oversight or interference. If the market can do it, let the market do it. It also allows businesses to meet the demands of the housing market. This is a win-win-win for Calgarians, Calgary business, and the City of Calgary. It is unclear how some members of council claim to be business-oriented or voting against these recommendations. Now, I am in favor of the strategy, but have some concerns, primarily, well, just one really. There's been talk about rent control. It should never be part of this conversation. This has been a disaster in Toronto, New York, Sweden, and Switzerland. Rent control means no incentive to build. Rent control will have the opposite effect on affordable housing, and the Fraser Institute had a great column that appeared in the Calgary Herald entitled, "Rent Control Will Be a Disaster for Calgary." So, so please look it up. So let the market decide. Let's, let's cut red tape. And if, if, if the developers and builders want to build it and people are going to buy, well, that's how it should be. So I just think council needs to get out of the way and let the, let, let the market do its job.
Thank you.
And that's all she wrote.
Well, whoever your speechwriter was, she was great as, so, sorry. Had to. Okay, Craig, you can just hang on the line and just mute yourself while we go through the next group of speakers. Anthony, you are next. And just a reminder, if you are, if you are tuning in online, make sure your device is muted. There is someone who is joining us online, and their device is not muted. Okay, Jean's got it. Okay, Anthony, go ahead.
Thank you.
Really hammering that point home. Yep.
My notes say good afternoon, but I'll say good evening and thank you. My name is Anthony Cox. I'm a born and raised Calgarian. Lived in Calgary virtually all my life, except for that brief detour to Edmonton to get a law degree. Had the opportunity to prefer my, my professional and educational goals, and I appear before you tonight, holding both a bachelor's degree in political science and a law degree, and for fun, I have my own business. Let's begin with what, with agreeing that there is a housing challenge in Calgary. I also submit that these, sorry, the housing challenges are, however, not akin to a spontaneous natural disaster like a fire, a pandemic, or, in the case of Calgary, a catastrophic flood that necessitates spontaneous, short-term, temporary, executive action to meet the challenge of the moment. This, unlike the challenges, other challenges mentioned above, is an issue with profound irreversible long-term effects, and the consequences will outlast the flood and the pandemic by a long shot. It must be considered accordingly. There are many solutions to this housing challenge, and they must be explored and fully accessed, evaluated, debated, and challenged. It is, as we can all, all see, a heated issue which requires sober, dispassionate, democratic, and a cool-headed discussion. I would implore council to consider, consider generally facts over feelings and process over politics. Some underlying concerns that I have are the broad impacts of the proposed housing strategy. You're looking at something that will directly or indirectly affect 100% of single-family dwellings, whether we're talking about a blanket upzoning, or relaxed, or eliminated parking requirements, or some other thing. This is a big deal. The homeless population represents a very large number of people, approximately 1.5% of the Calgary population, all of whom have value and deserve dignity and reasonable compassion, support, and assistance. Affordability generally, simply put, we need more land than it is available. This requires the political will of council to include expansion of available lands in addition to some other solutions proposed in the strategy. It is the best strategy for stable, sustainable, affordable, and diverse housing. New law releases functionally sell out in a matter of days, sometimes days, often months. We simply need more land. The city holds, according to Mary Moran's piece in the Herald of earlier today, some 407 parcels of land in the city's control. And Ms. Moran indicates that only two of those 407 parcels are allocated for residential housing. Concerning, concerningly, this percentage is a mere 2%. Respectfully, the city must seriously consider the prospect of looking into their own holdings and proverbial backyards before they look to those of private landowners. It's time to simply deploy those city lands for housing. It's simply the best, best solution and demonstrates leadership. Be the change as council that you wish to see. There are economic and financial consequences. When somebody puts a fourplex up to, next to a bungalow, they can lose 8% to 10% of their property value instantly. There's also an issue of municipal, municipal autonomy and self-determination. There have been what could politely be, be called timely overtures being made by the federal government to steer and influence this housing policy debate in Calgary. The net-net of these overtures sounds a bit like approve the proposed housing strategy as-is immediately, or we won't fund you. Municipal planning, I will remind council, is the properly, properly the, the domain first, foremost, and principally of that of the City of Calgary. And their job is to steer the vision of its immediate planning and future in representation of its constituents' wishes and values. The response to, the housing challenges needs to be proportionate and based on data and fact, and the process needs to be democratic. And there's, there's something in me that, as the political science, it says we want to revisit this. I'm recognizing limitations on time. If someone wants to ask me what I think about representative and direct democracy, I'd be happy to share it. And the last point that I want to make is, is the best solution here is when the wishes and values of the electors are in question, which is quite possibly the case here. Representative democracy must revert to direct democracy, and that presents today as a plebiscite, and I'd be happy to share my thoughts and comments if anyone has any questions. I oppose the proposed housing strategy.
Thank you, Anthony. Zach, you are next to speak.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So my name is Zach here, or Zach Karim, and I sit as the Chair of the Cliff Bungalow Mission Community Association. I work in real estate and have graduate degrees in economics and finance, and I have a background in both public policy and capital markets. In Mission Cliff Bungalow, everything's already zoned, RCG plus, but we have no real horse in this race, but I think six or seven people asked if I could speak, so here I am. So I'd like to start by just distilling the public policy rationale for blanket upzoning, because it's extremely important to, to understand properly. So it's ultimately about enhancing industry productivity. It's going to save developers time and money, which allows them to deliver row housing at a lower cost. The blanket upzoning reduces red tape. It reduces legal costs. It reduces compliance costs. It reduces communications costs. It reduces consulting costs, and it reduces financing costs by reducing the time required to actually develop the parcel. It also reduces the need for as many public sector workers to work on these LOC files, which read them up to do more important work. So all those productivity improvements effectively result in a lower housing cost, which over time drives additional supply at any given price point. So at any given level of demand, more supply results in lower prices. I don't think that's really up for debate. It's just basic supply and demand. It's not going to happen overnight, but it will happen. And it's not the only solution, but it's a small and reasonable solution, and it'll be a lasting solution to a persistent problem. And I can't understate how important this is. Over the past decade, it's become clear that our country is suffering from a productivity problem. And in my view, this is driven increasingly by costs we place on commerce. At the same time, there is a downside of blanket upzoning that ties back to the utility of consumer choice.
Everyone who is listening or waiting their turn online on the phone, if you are not, Zach, please mute. Thank you. Go ahead, Zach.
Okay, thanks. So yeah, a blanket upzoning policy does reduce diversity of neighborhood type, and that is an important part of housing choice. So for a large majority of Calgarians, they do have a choice between multiple neighborhoods, and they select the neighborhood they want, based on varying amenities, neighborhood design, housing forms, and other factors. A reduction of that choice does reduce well-being for some people. That's, that's the same reason we don't drive the same car. We don't all wear the same clothes. It's not really a class struggle. It's just basic human nature that we're all unique and we all have diverse wants and needs. And different neighborhoods apply different needs to different people. And given that these two issues are in conflict with regards to the RCG upzoning, the city council should be struggling with this issue. So I'm happy to see this is contentious, and it's evident of how seriously you guys take your jobs. And when both sides are right, and both sides are also wrong, the answer isn't for your side to win, it's to find a middle ground solution that addresses the merit of both sides. So I'll leave it there. If you have any questions, happy to address them.
Thank you, Zach. You can just hang on the line and mute, and if there's questions of this panel, we may come back to you. Jonathan Hamm.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Jonathan Hamm, and I am here today to voice my support for all the recommendations of the Housing and Affordability Task Force. I am a recent graduate from the UFC's School of Architecture, Planning, and Landscape. Furthermore, I have become one of the members of the newly formed Strong Towns Calgary, an organization that's focused on financial solvency on, in, from an urban planning perspective. However, I do want to spend some time steelmanning the opposition of these recommendations. People who do not, who do not own homes obviously want their homes to be affordable so that they can buy one. But in contrast, once you own a home, the last thing you would want is for the value of your biggest investment to decline, as the name Housing Affordability seems to suggest. However, the issue is actually much deeper than that. Currently, the way, the main way we build houses is with almost all the services provided from the get-go. Meaning that the small population that a new community starts with has the largest share of those services at the beginning. And as more and more people move into the community, their share of the pie gradually declines. This results in a perverse incentive structure in place for existing homeowners. Why would they want to dilute their services? Wouldn't they prefer to freeze their investment in place and not see their share of services decline? They achieve this stability by ensuring the, the city has a tight stranglehold on the development process. Historically, a, a community would start out with very minimal services, a bunch of buildings just in a row, really. And as more and people move into the community, the tax base grows. It allows new services such as paved roads, underground stormwater, and a new, and a full-time fire service, for example, to be implemented. Now, we expect everything to be provided upfront, regardless of having a tax base to pay for it. I want to urge council to move towards a system where the taxes collected per hectare of land correlate with the services provided per hectare. This does not necessarily mean density, but that, just that the densest, most productive parcels of land
Hello, this is Joanna Cassell. I'm here.
Hi, Gianna. I'm just going to get you to mute, and we are just in the mid, we are just in the middle of one speaker, and I will call you for the next panel. So just stay on the line and just stay muted until I call you again, please.
Okay, stay on the phone line?
Yes, stay on the phone line and just mute your device.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Bye.
You haven't lost time. Go ahead.
Uh, we're, so I would just hope that the, the taxes collected per hectare of land correlates with the, with the services, the quality of services provided per hectare. This does not necessarily mean density, but the densest, most productive parcels of land ought to be the places where the city reinvests in services to the highest extent. And as it is, the policies and practices that are building, that built our, building our communities make them hostile to any change. Nevertheless, this, there is no right to receive more in services than you pay in taxes. Calgary, for all its wealth, is stretched so thin financially that if, if growth were to stop, we would not raise nearly enough taxes. Based on the 2020 Infrastructure Report, we have nearly $94 billion of infrastructure to pay for, of that also is 86%, of which is the Big Four Roads, Stormwaters, Sewer, and Potable Water, which is all directly related to how, to the footprint of the city. And we only have, you know, over $300 billion in properties to tax for it. So loose math, at, at the current rate, tax rate, with that ratio of private to public investment, I don't believe that quite cuts it, and we certainly can't do that forever. By encouraging development within the existing service area, as these recommendations do, you increase your assets without radically increasing your liabilities. Moreover, you infuse character, dynamism, prosperity, and wealth back into these neighborhoods, dozens of which, according to the latest census, have seen population declines. In sum, you have three options of how you can develop, but you can only choose two. You can have low taxes, stable services, or low density, but you cannot have all three. To finish, I want to state a piece of Strong Towns wisdom. No neighborhood should be exempt from change, but no neighborhood should be subjected to radical change. Let's incrementally build an affordable and solvent city, not just for individuals, but for the city as a whole. Thank you for listening, and I encourage you to pass these measures.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, and we have Humira.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be sharing after the dinner break. I currently live in Crescent Heights, but I've been an inner-city resident for over 27 years and have been an active Realtor for the same amount of time. And having diligently submitted my detailed document, comments about the recommendations, which, some of which I find contentious, I want to share some insights after hearing so many individuals and a notification I received today. So I recognize the importance and critical need for affordable housing throughout the city, and encourage the use of initiatives to meet both the needs of today and future residents of Calgary. But putting housing affordability in the same bucket as RCG, blanket RCG zoning, I think is reckless. And it's, it's, it's important to employ a thoughtful, measured approach which respects the established communities and their respective residents' investments. Sure, you know, my colleague Zach mentioned, you know, we need to be more productive. But, you know, who is it at the expense of? And, and, you know, since lifetime investments? So I staunchly have objected blanket RCG action. Bold doesn't necessarily translate into meaningful. So I, I challenge council, as someone else just did in this group, to ask the most pervasive landowner and landlord, the City of Calgary, to walk the same line. The city just today released a request for applications for residential development of 4.78 acres adjacent to Richland Green Park for $12 million, which includes zero non-market housing. I have to ask, why, when we have an affordable housing emergency on hand, why are we selling this land, or why is the city selling this land? The city, along with CHC, decommissioned Bridgeland Place, which had 210 residential units, and the renovations were slated for mid-2023. I mean, I certainly rely on our municipal leaders in the city administration to have an accurate pulse on something as critical as housing. Would it not have been prudent to accelerate the refurbishment, given the housing affordability emergency? Where is the shelter these units could provide today? Is there an opportunity in Calgary's downtown for affordable housing beyond what has already been actioned? I mean, these are only things I know about. I'm certain there's lots I don't know. And, and earlier today, someone made mention of the Heritage Guidelines and all the work that has been done to date on the protocols. How is this blanket RCG zoning going to respect that process? Categorically, RCG zoning in the inner city will not increase affordability. It's a well-known fact, in the inner city, any city, land sells for a premium. Blanket RCG does not consider the unique aspects of each community. As the previous woman, who is completely, you know, lovely and intelligent about Brentwood, said, "The residents of the community know it best." And really, to say that we are going to accept homogeneity in a culture of diversity is really a sad state of affairs. So I'm really asking you to think about what my tour guide, and I would like some answers to those questions, said to me at the Coliseum. You know, to the, to the council and to the city, "This is what they left behind. We still visit it. What will you leave behind?" Thank you.
Thank you, Humira. Okay, we do have questions for this panel. Counselor Crawford.
Yeah. My question is for Mr. Chandler. I was here in 2010. I got elected when the, your Progressive Group for Independent Businesses elected its first candidate to City Hall. first candidate to City Hall. And I'm sort of under the impression this is the first time you've ever presented to I guess my questions are, is this issue that important to break that silence? And what do we, how do we talk to the conservative members of this council to get them to understand that this is a nonpartisan issue and is critical for the future of Calgary?
Yeah, this, this is pretty important. I guess one of the reasons why, you know, on a personal note, it seemed to be important for me. My daughter is going down to, you know, college downtown and, uh, you know, she didn't want to, you know, live at home, I guess, for those college years. So we're looking for a place and she was literally going to places where there's 40 or 50 people lined up to try to rent something. So, I mean, it is a crisis. And, uh, you know, we don't want to be having people, uh, you know, especially with Kenny, who, who launched this Alberta Calling campaign, which is really responsible for a lot of the people coming here. Um, well, I did, I didn't, I don't think he thought through when he did this campaign to tell everyone to move here that there was a housing problem, so we have to address it. And quite frankly, Pierre Poliev, you know, the one Dan McLean and Andrew Chabot and everyone else voted for, uh, is coming out and saying this is a, this is a major issue. So I voted Les Lewis, but I support Pierre now. But, uh, you know, this is the guy who's doing a private members bill, basically stating everything you guys say, uh, in, in, in the House of Commons on Monday. So obviously, it's a crisis everywhere, not just Calgary. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's important to look at this from a fiscal issue. This cuts red tape. It, it gets out of the way of business, uh, if people want to build it. So I mean, it's just, it's let, let the market reign. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying anything inconsistent. I'm saying let, let, let the market decide, you know, what gets done. So that's, that's my point on that.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Pootmans?
Thank you, Chair. Anthony Cox, please.
Thank you, Counselor Pootmans. Good, good evening.
Good evening. Sorry about the lengthy telephone tag, but here we are.
Always enjoy a match.
The, um, you raised the issue of the, um, blanket rezoning being perhaps not always advantageous or to the advantage of the city even. Could you please expand? You raised the issue of value deterioration in the face of blanket rezoning. I wonder if you could expand on that, then that's a contentious statistic, by the way, but go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'd be pleased to. I just have to consult my notes, if I may.
Sure.
Lot of notes. So basically, my understanding is the property value of a homeowner living adjacent or proximate to a lot that has added the installation of a fourplex or greater, uh, is that it almost never increases that individual landowner's property value as a result. There are studies, there are studies, and in five minutes, we can't do it, and if we're capped by 9:30 tonight, we can't do it. But I'd be happy to discuss it with you offline. There are studies that suggest a loss of value is routinely in order of eight to 10% of the property value, and it's never going to be recovered while that, that property remains as a detached, single-family dwelling. Um, further, often homeowners' financial viability is, is dependent on or closely tied to the sustained and incremental increases in their home value. So if we take, for example, a home valued at, say, $700,000, losing for arguments and discussion purposes, 10% or $70,000 of its value because somebody's put a googoplex up next to it, that's never going to be recovered and is problematic on a micro level for that homeowner. On a macro level, when multiplied reasonably by, say, 10,000 over, say, a five-year period, that results in a net loss to a Calgary homeowner of, of similar, similar stature and value of some $70 million. And that, that's real money. Like even at city levels, that's real money. Uh, and if the city's housing proposal is approved and works as it's envisioned, it would very likely affect far, far more than 10,000 homeowners with the financial consequences multiplied accordingly. It's potentially a staggering consequence, uh, that would be catastrophic to a homeowner who just wanted to live in the home that they bought and the community that they carefully chose for the reasons they chose it. They chose it as they saw it, they expected it to be the same, and that's where we get into a social contract discussion, which I don't think you asked me about, but I'm happy to address.
I, I actually was gonna go there briefly before we finish this conversation. I actually said that some other cities, the experience you just related has not borne out in reality, but we'll, we'll have that conversation again.
I would enjoy that. Thank you.
So you, back to the social justice piece, or what I would call it-
Social contract.
Social contract, which I think is related to the idea of a, a neighborhoods or a community's, um, character.
Yeah, well, more so, more, more to it than that even, actually.
Yeah, what, yes, but let's deal with character for the moment because the challenge I've offered several of the communities east of SRC that, that I represent, um, we've had the discussion, is, is does character depend on being a bungalow? Does character depend on whatever the built form was of that age? And I don't think it does. I think the character of the people, the nature of the people who live there, that's what defines the character of a neighborhood.
Well, respectfully, Counselor, I don't see it that way. I would suggest that the social contract is more about a homeowner buying a particular, buying in a particular neighborhood to live in for often decades in our ward, Ward Six, where I'm one of your constituents, as you know, um, is based on their considered view of, that they want to live in a certain way and their neighborhoods, and that their neighbors agree to do so as well. That social contract of, I, of, "I see this, I like this, I buy this, my neighbors want this too, we all want the same thing," is a social contract that predates this months, and I say months, old debate by decades, at least. And that homeowner was there first. And we all know and understand that being there first should and does have meaning when it comes to land. And my last point is, there is no exception, or there is no expectation of that homeowner that the zoning of, of the area where he lives in will be randomly and broadly revisited and changed, making their chosen neighborhood unrecognizable and their longtime chosen home unlivable or irrevocably devalued, compromising their financial well-being and leaving them no choice but to join the accelerating wave of community exodus involuntarily fleeing their chosen home and neighborhood.
I guess I, I simply don't accept any of the above.
We have that in common, Counselor. I don't accept your position either.
Just, I think that change is inevitable. Thirty, forty thousand people a year coming to the city. If, if people are, we're thinking about a leave it to Beaver environment for the rest of their lives, that's not on the table. That can't exist, that, that simply is unreal, an unrealistic fantasy.
It's part of the greater solution. And there, and, and in my remarks, I did add that there are other ways to solve this problem. And one of them is that we need more land, Counselor. We need more land so that we can offer people the, the lifestyle and the, and the home structure that they envision, that they value. And it's not for you nor me to say, "You should value this and you should live thusly." There should be opportunities for both. So we can grow up, and I'm fully in favor of that, but I also think we should grow out. And I don't think that with respect to this change being inevitable equation, that it should be a blanket upzoning that allows basically a rubber tamp, rubber stamp, and to use a Disney parlance, speed pass, so that people can shrug their shoulders and say, "Hey, well, it's already blanket rezoned, upzoned for this. Anybody want to fight?" You've changed the dialogue from the good work that the administration does when they're evaluating these applications on a one-off basis, on a case-by-case basis, to becoming neighbor-on-neighbor conflict about, "You're not going to sell to that guy so he can put a sixplex in there, are you? Because you've got a corner lot and I don't want all those people looking into my yard while I respect my privacy." It can be all things to all people, but it's not all things in the same place. And I would venture to say, Counselor Pootmans, that our war, our writing actually has a very high percentage of multifamily, high-density, uh, accommodation and residences in it, that I would think that there's room for some, but it doesn't require to blanket, require a blanket rezoning, and it certainly doesn't, doesn't require, uh, an inaccountable, uh, process where people don't get to speak to the changes that are happening not only in their neighborhood, but on their block and probably next door. Need accountability.
This process actually enshrines a consultation at the development premise stage, so that's, that's enshrined with this as part of-
But it's the speed pass because you've already branded it as eligible for this.
All right. I am going to remind that we ask questions, not engage in debate. So I have given all of my, some of my colleagues that warning. So Counselor Pootmans, let's ask some questions, let's not engage in debate.
We'll continue this discussion at another time.
At your convenience, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor McLean.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And my question is for, uh, Mr. Chandler. Are you still there, Craig?
Craig, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Counselor McLean has some questions for you.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Hey, Craig. Uh, okay, so I think we all agree, we need more homes being built, um, more affordable housing. And you had mentioned Pierre Poliev and the CPC policies, uh, uh, from what I understand, you learned a lot of synergies with our Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations, which is a lot more transit-oriented development. More government lands up for housing. I think we could use more from the city, but, um-
Yeah.
And a big one, removing red tape fees and taxes. And again, I'd like to see more of that. But I guess my question to you is, have you seen anything in the federal party, conservative party platform that advocates for blanket upzone, blanket upzoning in, for entire cities, reducing public input into planning and development, minimum parking requirements or, or rent controls? Do you, have you seen that in that platform anywhere?
No, I haven't seen rent control, and I'd oppose that strongly. I know you would as well. Um, you know, the blanket upzoning, the exact wording, I have to go back and look at, but I think it refers to, um, blanket upso, upzoning, uh, quite a bit. And I do understand your position too, because I door knocked in Ward 12 and quite frankly, uh, they don't seem to want blanket upzoning, neither does 14, neither does your area. But, uh, I, we have to do something. I don't really like that, and, and obviously, rent control is just a disaster. That's so, that's pure and outright socialism. But no, um, I'm not sure about the blanket upzoning, but the other stuff, no. Of course, he doesn't talk about rent control. And of course, he doesn't talk about those things. And he is, it is, it is heavily focused too on transit nodes and whatnot as well, so. But I have to go back and review it. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think-
Go ahead, sorry.
Well, we both, like, from the federal policy, you might agree that, you know, it appears for a lot more building and greenfields and new communities, uh, on lands and what, whatnot, which again, we don't really address too much in this report. But just, uh, just as a closing note, um, regardless of whether we vote red, blue, or orange, or whatever, we're all kind of on the same pace, we're trying to solve this crisis. And I think all we're looking for is, is that, is that, uh, you know, some items, you know, need to be debated. And would you agree with, maybe it would be a good idea to poll and vote on each individual item in this report separately, or do you think an omnibus is the way to go?
Actually, I think it's very wise to vote separately. I don't think an omnibus is ever a way to go. I mean, that's how they hide stuff in the US as well. I think, I think, I think there's a lot of merit to what's in there, but I think you need to vote on each individual item. I really do.
All right, thanks. I appreciate your input.
Thanks.
I really appreciate the people who want to, uh, carry this meeting through until Sunday of next week by voting on every item individually. Counselor Walcott.
Um, Mr. Cox, please. It's a quick, well, I'm not gonna go down the route that you and, and Mr., uh, Counselor Pootmans did. I, I just had a question about your source with regard to housing values near, uh, fourplexes. I just want to Google it, because all the research I had, facts over feelings, tells me the opposite, so I want to know the sources all.
Well, I'm glad you raised the facts over feelings, Counselor. Um, I don't have that, that information at my fingertips, but if you, if you wish, I can follow up with you. Can you, you can use it for your purposes going forward. I'm happy to provide it.
Yeah, I'd love the citation. Thank you. That's all. Appreciate it. Um, and then I wanted to, Zach, if you're on the line still, Mr. Crane. He's just up there.
I'm still here, yep.
Um, you, thank you for being here. I really do appreciate it. Uh, I, I, you, you raised an interesting kind of comment about some of the drastic changes, uh, that, that come from rezoning and, and how we, we should kind of balance them, them equally. I, I had a question if, around the lines of if they are actually balanced right now. And so for your neighborhood right now, you're Cliff Bungalow Mission, MCG and DC combinations, uh, commercial in the middle. So you've got kind of the, one of the versions of blanket upzoning, uh, at one point of the MCG. Is your neighborhood uniform?
It is not, no.
Do you have, uh, single detached houses?
We do.
RCGs, uh, so like townhomes?
We have those too.
Uh, apartment buildings?
We have those too.
Uh, when you, looking at the city as a whole, um, 60% is zoned, uh, RC1. Is there anywhere in your collective neighborhoods that are zoned RC1?
No, but I think that like someone who lives in the neighborhood should have the option to move to an R1 community. Now, I don't believe that 60% of the city is appropriate for that choice, because it, it limits too much the other way. But if, if you're gonna have like real choice, then, then there should be some communities that are exclusively R1s, and there should be some communities that are just R1s and R2s, and some that go up to RCG, and some that are only apartment buildings, and some, like ours, that have a mix of everything. And people can pick and choose, and choose what they want.
I agree. My, my question's more around the idea than that, uh, does zoning create exclusive neighborhoods?
It could. Doesn't have to.
I agree. I agree. Another, when we hear that stat, 60% of the city is, is currently zoned R1. Additional to that is another about 15% that's R2. And so you're looking at about 75% of the city is, is between those two things.
Right.
When you look at your neighborhood that's not, um, zoned that way, you still have that housing form. If we do rezone the city, is there a chance that we'll just be able to actually maintain single detached communities because zoning doesn't dictate the housing form?
That's, uh, that's a big question, isn't it? Just can you blanket upzone and still expect some communities to remain R1? Um, and I know that there's varying opinions on that, and I'm, I'm honestly not, not sure. I understand the merits of, of both sides. What I would say, though, is that, I would suggest that there's, that there's probably a set number of developers that, that focus on, on RCG. Um, and I would bet that if city administration and them sat in a room together, they could come up with a list of neighborhoods where RCGs work really well, where there's, there's been a lot of RCG applications that have been approved, uh, a high percentage of applications get approved, there's a large number of applications within those communities, um, and CAs and residents are generally supportive of those, uh, of those, of those types of applications, of whether that's 20 communities, or 30 communities, or 50 communities. I would think that's where you start with the blanket. You can have both. And for communities that have no RCG, have them done on an application-by-application basis for now, and then every couple of years, you can review it and say, "Oh, well, this neighborhood wasn't on the original list that we blanket upzoned, but we got five applications this year and they were all approved. Maybe let's look at blanket uploading these two or three additional neighborhoods." Can you not have both?
When you're thinking about it that way, uh, I ask the question, because the topic of, uh, of, of the day is affordability. If we were to exclude neighborhoods from this process, what do you anticipate would happen to their land value?
I would honestly have no idea. I could see, again, I could see it going both ways. You could see, you could see a scenario where people who really want to be in an exclusive R1 neighborhood want to pay more. And you could also see the opposite happen, where, where, where four or five people are now splitting that same cost of land, because it's going into a row townhouse. It could be that the areas that are blanket upzoned are actually going up in value. Um, it could be a mix of, it could be a mix of both. Right?
Do you think, sorry, I want to rephrase. Do you think that, uh, an R1 neighborhood left out of this process, it would go down in value, or it would go up?
I don't think it would. That's tricky. I, I don't think it would change, to be honest. I think, I think that if you focused on blanket upzoning, our, like neighborhoods where RCG is already happening, um, why would people want to all of a sudden move from those communities? Where if RCGs have been- Where if RCGs have been happening for the last two or three or five years, and the community residents are generally accepting of them, why would all of a sudden a blanket RCG in those communities force people to want to move to an exclusive R1 neighborhood? I think, though, that if you took a neighborhood that's exclusively R1, and all of a sudden you even skipped the R2 process, and you went all the way to RCG, you could see some residents getting upset, so is there like even like a baby step approach for some of these neighborhoods, I would be curious.
Okay, no, those are all my questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Chabot.
Yeah, just go back to Mr. Cox, you made a couple of comments in your presentation, something about proportionate response, can you elaborate a little bit on what you meant by that?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Chabot, I'll just consult my notes. So, basically, this relates to the notion that there's different numbers of people affected differently by different aspects of the proposed housing strategy proposal, one of the things that I heard, because the Calgary Homeless Foundation was on global news today, and one of the things that they said is that there are some 1,900 people who are unhoused in Calgary, and I understand that this includes some 200 families, it's a lot of people, and as I had mentioned, this, if we call Calgary a 1.3 million person city, and I know, well, it's going faster and faster all the time, thank you, Counsel Pootmans, but for my analysis, 2,000 people for round numbers who are unhoused represents about 1.5%, give or take, of the Calgary population, and again, the unhoused, I have no reservations whatsoever, that they all deserve dignity, reasonable compassion and support and assistance, not even at issue, but I also notice that with respect to the proportionality, there's also an affordability issue, where there's a lot of other people who are in situations where they are unhappy with where they're at, they can't afford where they're at, or the rates of rent are going up quickly, so those are, those are a larger number than, say, 2,000, I would number them in the tens of thousands, if I was to guess, and I'm sure Counsel knows, and then we get to the next level, which is the homeowners in Calgary, you know, there's hundreds of thousands of homeowners in Calgary, there's still fewer, but still hundreds of thousands of single-family detached residential homeowners in Calgary, those are, those are the greatest in number that we have, and I would suggest that, if you'll indulge me, pardon me. I think the proportion of the solution needs to reflect the people it affects, and how profoundly it does affect them, if we've got hundreds of thousands of detached, single-family homeowners being dictated to by tens of thousands of people who are having difficulty with housing or affordability, then I think we need to find a solution that serves everyone's needs, and does not disproportionately weigh on the hundreds of thousands of single-family detached dwelling owners for the benefit of the tens of thousands, it's just, it's just not proportionate.
Okay, another thing you mentioned was representative democracy, i.e. by way of plebiscite?
Yes.
I think that's a...
Yes, I did mention that, I have a couple of comments on that, my view, as I mentioned, is when the wishes and the values of the electors are at all in question, which, again, I suggest is probably the case here, because that's why we're talking for hours and days on end, representative democracy must revert to direct democracy, and that is the only way we're going to do that, because we can't have 1.4 million people parade through council chambers to cast their vote, that's going to be a plebiscite, and while this housing proposal has been in the hands of city administration for some time, I understand the proposal came initially to council in this form as we see it, in May of this year, and recapping, I understand that it was discussed in council in June at some length, and again, rebounding in July for the rebound flop to the dismissal to the approval, which brings us here today, and returning for rapid deliberation and determination by council from what is September 13th to 16th, doing the math, this has been before council for some, about some four months, is set to be functionally determined in four days, and that is just some of the context on the rush that has been put on this policy decision, I would submit that I would hope and that I candidly expect that council could effectively marshal a material consultation with the voters in Calgary in less than half that time, because if we're talking four months from May to now, which is a reasonable approximation, I'm pretty sure that this capable council could really put a plebiscite together, not in two years when the election happens, but whenever we can marshal the administration to do it, and if one puts any stock in the recent polls, and I'm not here to say I do or I don't, the confidence and support of council generally is far below an encouraging level, which suggests a strong mandate, where you could exercise your muscles as council members, as delegates, I think, when you don't have popular support, I think you have to make a considered reversion to your role as a representative, full stop, and the best way to be a good representative is to say, if it's close and it's important, let's send it back, let's send it back to the people, certainly, a consultation can be done at least as promptly as this policy proposal has been brought to council for determination, and I wanted to point out a couple of things on just the practicality of the plebiscite, a plebiscite was conducted a few short years ago, as council will recall, when seeking the views of electors on a potential Olympic bid, I think we all remember that, the housing proposal is far bigger and far more reaching and far more, with far more profound consequences for Calgary than any Olympic bid will ever have, and it's had a great impact, we still have the flag in council chambers, it's a big deal, the effects, this policy proposal affects every person who lives in Calgary, whether they rent property, own property, or aspire to either, and it's my understanding, from a financial perspective, that the city has recently spent in the neighborhood of $500,000, just in the last, in this calendar year, on the evaluation of a Commonwealth Games bid, that's what I had heard, I stand to be corrected, I don't have access to that information, but much more was spent on the exploration of a bid to bring a second Olympics to Calgary, and without putting a thumb in anyone's eye, it's even quite recently that it's been put to council to consider sending, I think it was $100,000, in financial support to the mayor of Branford, Ontario's cause to engage and intervene in Quebec politics, and countless more dollars were spent on city administration and council time to marshal the issue for discussion and determination by the council, respectfully, I suggest that the representatives, not the delegates, but the representatives on council, that there are both time and financial resources to properly and categorically seek the views and mandate of the people of Calgary, that's what I think about a plebiscite, Counselor Chabot.
Direct democracy.
Direct democracy.
Okay, thanks, enough of the question, thanks for being here.
Thanks. With permission, Mayor Gondak, can I just ask my two questions real quick, Mr. Cox, I have a couple of questions for you, you alluded to the op-ed, written by Mary Moran and others, and about the purported 400 parcels of city land, are you aware of the condition states size of those 400 parcels of city land?
Not as well as Mary Moran.
Are you aware where she would have received the information on those 400 parcels of land?
There are not customarily footnotes in an op-ed in the Calgary Herald, I would be happy to contact her to ask her what her sources are, but as you will recall, Counselor, the author of the op-ed was very well positioned in Calgary to understand not only the land holdings and the financial circumstances, but also the procedures and bylaws and conditions and restrictions on lands available, because she has been very closely involved with city council and city council projects, so I would say that I have great confidence in Mary Moran's intelligence and her information in these regards, so, trust but verify, but I would trust her to start.
I'm going to stop, and I'm just going to say that that's actually not information that we regularly share with outside sources, and I mean, if we want to, you know, consider a 10-meter, 10-square meter road right away a suitable parcel for housing for someone, then so be it, okay, one more question for you, you talk about democracy, over the last two days, we have heard from over 150 speakers across income, age, ability, is this not democracy in action, is this not people weighing in on the future decisions of their city, fact?
This is part of the democratic process, but it is not democracy in its complete state, I would invoke...
That was my only question, is whether or not, and if this in fact is a democratic process, this right now.
It's, it's...
It is, okay, good, I have no further questions.
Necessary, but it is not sufficient, Counselor, it is one element of democracy.
I have no further questions, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you, I have a question for, hang on, I think it's Jonathan. Hi, thanks for being with us, now, Strong Towns has just recently started to be active in Calgary, am I right?
That's right.
Great, and when you quote studies and information, is it based on things that actually have citations?
When I quote studies and...
Yeah, like when you talk about the research that's done through Strong Towns, is it done by researchers?
Yeah, they're, well, they're advocate, they're policy advocates.
Yeah, and so they have citations, they give examples.
Yeah, they have citations.
Yeah, they talk about, you know, the cities where they've got this information from, right, pretty solid stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, qualified people?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's the only question I have for you, appreciate that, Mr. Cox, I have a couple of questions for you. Hi.
Good evening.
I know you're going to get the citation to Counsel Walcott about where you received your information about property values, I think it was, going down.
I can try to do that, sure.
That'd be great, I'm wondering if you could tell us where you got your information about single detached homes being the majority of homes in this city?
I didn't say they were the majority, I said they numbered in the hundreds of thousands.
Okay, are you aware that the number of single detached homes has gone down almost 27% in the last five years?
I can tell you also why that's happened, Mayor.
I don't need to know that, I'm just asking if you're aware of that?
I understand.
Okay, I'm also curious, you talked about how many people are homeless, did you know that 100,000 Calgarians are at high risk of losing housing? That's also from the Homeless Foundation.
That is, and it is very much a concerning element, but we must also address, if it numbers 100,000, it still pales in number to the number of single detached family dwellings that exist and the people who own them, and the response by council needs to be proportionate.
Okay, then let's go back to something you said about social contract theory, according to social contract theory, we would have moral obligations, and we would share common values, is it your proposition, then, that the people who live in single detached homes somehow have different values than the people who are at risk of being homeless?
I think at times, those values diverge.
Could you tell me how they divert, tell me the difference between someone who lives in a single detached home, their values versus the values of someone who's at risk of being homeless, the 100,000 people that are at risk of being homeless, tell me how those values diverge.
Are you asking me to give you an essay on socio-political, socioeconomic theory?
Absolutely not, you said, I think their values diverge, I'm asking you...
I think they do.
How?
I think they do, I think their priorities are different, and priorities are defined by values, I think people who are houseless or on the verge of houselessness have a more immediacy for their arc of need, and if we invoke Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we can get into that psychological conversation if that benefits council.
Oh, I don't, I don't need to get into that psychological conversation.
But frankly, that's the answer.
No, I asked you what the difference in values is, you started talking about needs, what's the difference in their values?
Values and priorities are defined by needs, full stop, and if we want to look at, on a clinical, scientific, human level, of how a human in various states of their happiness will prioritize values, let's just invoke Maslow's hierarchy of needs, it's very clear, and I think it answers your question, Mayor.
I would say that my question is answered by the simple fact that each one of those people value having a roof over their head, that's a common value, that's a shared value, that's a social contract they share.
They may value that, but where they prioritize that value will differ from person to person, whether they live in a high-density, multi-family dwelling, whether they live on an acreage, whether they live in a yurt on the Bow River, people will value that differently, it's very clear that people live where and how they choose to value how they live and where they live, and people value these things differently, yes, we all want shelter, but what we want is different, which is why, with respect, Madam Mayor, we need to have diversity of housing opportunities and availabilities in the city of Calgary that are not single-minded, in that we need to blanket rezone so we can stick whatever in wherever we want to, we've seen the example of Marta Loop, that's worked out so well, it hasn't, with respect, and give people choices, you know what, I'm not here to tell you how to live, and I get the sense that council's kind of trying to tell me how to live, and I don't think that's right, I think there needs to be options, I think you need to let the market speak, and the market will speak, if you build it and they don't come, don't build anymore, but if you build it and they sell out in a week, probably there's a market crunch on that, and we need to address that, not by blanket rezoning, but annexing more land and making opportunities available for the market to decide, and for people to decide how and where they want to live, not on a blanket basis as dictated by 15 people on council and their administration, with respect.
Thank you for the respect, I greatly appreciate that, you made a comment as well...
Sarcasm is, has not, is not reciprocating me.
Okay, you were not asked a question.
But I was, I was treated fairly sarcastically by her worship, and I would appreciate that I am treated with the respect of my hours and presence on a Friday night, the time I've spent watching these proceedings, the research I've done, and the writing I've done.
Okay, I've got this, Mr. Cox, you just stated publicly that you feel that for some reason, people who are facing homelessness have different values and that we all make choices, so pardon me for being sarcastic, that's what you said.
Well, it's really not what I said, and if we can read back...
I have another question for you.
Can we finish this one first, your worship?
I have a question for you.
Worship, can we finish the first question first?
This is not a question, and as a chair, Counsel Chu, Counsel Chu, can you give me one minute, please, as the chair? Thank you.
Can we finish the first question?
Mr. Cox, as the chair, I rule over this meeting, and I am taking a minute, and I will rule on the discussion before us.
Please.
It has been two very long days, everybody, and we have a lot of time before us, we are going to ask questions, we are going to respond very directly to questions, and we are going to continue on, Mayor Gondak?
If I may ask, Madam Chair, without sarcasm, thank you, I am here as a volunteer, I am here as a citizen, I've been in this city for 50-plus years, I wish to be treated with respect.
Mr. Cox, if you continue without being asked a question, you will find yourself not getting asked more questions, it is simple as that, everybody else has equally spent their time here, Mayor Gondak, do you have another question?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cox, you indicated that council has sometimes been wasteful in their spending, you mentioned this idea of money that we've spent on bids, are you at all concerned about the amount of money and resources that we spend through the time that's spent going through individual RCG applications?
I do not have concerns about that whatsoever, because each applicant needs to be treated on a case-by-case basis as an individual, as the council would have the people presenting and joining council to be treated as individuals, everyone's got a story, just like the people who are houseless, the people who are not houseless have a story as well, and they need to be heard, and they need to perceive to be heard, and to blanket upzone... And to blanket upzone takes away that opportunity for those people to necessarily be heard, and I'm standing here today before you, Worship, to tell you that those people need to be heard regardless of the resources. If we are going to, if we're going to talk about the resources we expend on frivolous things, that is very far down the list in terms of the frivolities of the spendings of this Council.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Worship.
There are no further questions for this panel. I'm going to call names. Mackenzie, there's no further questions, you can join the gallery. Mackenzie Wilson. Peter Collins.
Yes, I'm here. I apologize, I was busy eating supper when you called my name earlier.
Everyone needs to eat, Peter.
Thanks.
You can just, I'll put you first in the panel. I'll go back. Gianna Casal?
Here.
Okay, you will be second in this panel. Mackenzie Wilson. Is there anyone in the gallery and chambers who is wishing, I think you've all spoken. Okay, okay, I'm gonna go through the list of names one last time. Lisa Poole. Philip Turnbull.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Philip, you will be third on this panel.
Thank you.
Corey Fitzgerald. Juan Pollock. Peter Collins. Brian Chen. Gregory Deech. Angus Ho. Natalie St. Hilaire. Beanie Chotier. Linda Legay. Abid Shaw. Patricia Grimwald. Is there anyone online whose name I have not called? Okay, this is our final-
I'm here by phone, I'm not sure if that's online.
If you're, yeah, if you're on the phone, like if you're on the phone bridge and I haven't called your name?
Yeah, my name is Kyle Parrott.
Kyle Parrott?
Yeah.
Okay, Kyle, you're gonna be number four in this panel. Is there anyone else on the phone bridge? Okay, so we have four speakers left, and that should take us to our 9:30 recess. For those four speakers who are on the phone bridge, if you could just mute for one minute, we just have one procedural item to do, and then we will come to you. We will be resuming this meeting at 9:30 tomorrow morning. We need a motion. Clerks has that ready, that the further continuation of the September 14th regular meeting of the Community Development Committee is to be set for 9:30 a.m. on Saturday, September the 16th. Council Sharp is moving that. Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, that is carried. Oh, Counselor Walcott? After this? Is it procedural? We are going to, we're gonna finish after this panel, I think we can comfortably, we can do these four people. Clerks?
Chair, we could prepare a motion in the, in the event it might be necessary. As we get closer to 9:30, you could make that call.
Okay, let's, let's just have that motion prepared, and we will see where we get to. Okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
Peter Collins, you are first, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Peter Collins, I live in Mayfair, I speak for myself. The Housing and Affordability Task Force has made many good recommendations, which I support. However, there are several recommendations which I oppose, in particular, blanket upzoning. Council should reject the task force recommendation for upzoning to RCG. Blanket RCG would certainly increase density over time, but is unlikely to increase affordability, and would substantially degrade the quality of life for many existing neighborhoods. Put simply, it would be a bad and ineffective policy. Newer Calgary communities are developed according to a master plan, which includes a carefully designed mix of single-family, multifamily, commercial developments, and cultural and community facilities, all with appropriate roadways, park spaces, and utilities infrastructure. In contrast, established R1 and R1/R2 communities were not designed for the substantially greater densification which blanket RCG zoning would permit. Neither roadways, utilities, nor public park spaces could properly accommodate the greatly increased number of residents. Blanket densification would have an almost entirely negative impact on established communities. RCG densification does not create affordability. Developers don't construct affordable housing, they construct the amount and type of housing which will maximize their profit for developments of the land. That is a rational response by developers to the market. Recent real estate statistics show that RCG units sell for an average of 690,000 per unit. The older houses which are being torn down to build these RCG multiplexes cost less than that. Often, those older existing detached and duplex dwellings are the affordable housing in a neighborhood, so replacing them with RCG multiplexes decreases the stock of affordable housing and reduces choice in housing type. A 2018 Think8 skew survey found that over two-thirds of Calgarians live in R1 or R2 dwellings. That percentage has declined since then due to substantial condo construction in recent years, but the survey also found that 66% of those looking for a new home are looking for a single-family home. So, if the city wants affordable housing, then it must either increase the land supply, that's my preferred choice, or intervene in the housing market. I support many of the actions proposed by the task force, in particular, selling or leasing city-owned land for affordable cohousing and cooperative housing, but I do not support the city directly providing affordable housing. Government rarely does anything better, or more efficiently, or at lower cost than the private and nonprofit sector. There's little reason to believe the city can do better than the market when it comes to building and operating housing. Since Calgary's inception, housing has been planned and developed by the private sector, and I have great faith that if the city expanded its land base and permitted developers to build what Calgarians want, the private sector would respond by building a sufficient supply of the types of housing that Calgarians want and can afford. Blanket RCG densification also creates confusion about the purpose of the local area plan process now underway for established communities such as my community. Why plan for increased density in logical places such as along major transportation corridors near LRT sites and on vacant or underutilized parcels if developers can build RCG multiplexes anywhere in a community? Blanket RCG is the opposite of responsible planned careful densification. The city should require that, other than green spaces and parks, all potential sites, whether owned by the city or others, along major transportation corridors near LRT sites and on vacant or underutilized commercial parcels must first be developed before permitting densification in established neighborhoods. Why is the Ernest Manning School site sitting undeveloped after so many years? And what about developing affordable housing on the former Midfield Mobile Home Park site which the city expropriated? Detached and duplex dwellings in established neighborhoods are an essential and desirable part of Calgary's housing stock and should be maintained, not destroyed. Task Force's proposed blanket rezoning to RCG as a radical proposal will not achieve its stated goal of creating more affordable housing, and will substantially alter, in a bad way, the quality of residential life in Calgary. Don't do something irreversibly bad, just say no to blanket RCG. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Gianna?
Here. Good day, Chair Penner, Mayor Gondak, Council, Administration, and City residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this most important city-community concern. I've listened for two days to the many concerned speakers and developers. The housing crisis does not address housing affordability. Firstly, as a municipal, provincial, and federal taxpayer, and as a first-generation Canadian citizen, I'm gravely offended by the Liberal Housing Minister, John Fraser,'s letter to Calgary City Council. My parents immigrated to Canada to provide a better life for the family legacy. They embrace the Canadian advantage. As a contributing Calgary resident since 1986, I believe, I feel obligated to speak. We have paid municipal taxes to the city of Calgary since 1986, and we have been responsible landowners. We have educated our two sons at the University of Calgary, and they have both contributed to the city of Calgary as responsible taxpayers. Our family has watched city development for almost 40 years. We are very familiar with the Banff Trail and Capitol Hill communities. We have witnessed single-family homes removed from housing stock and rebuilt with multifamily housing. Many developments do not include parking and rent for 2,500 plus per unit. City Administration and Council are permitting multifamily developments without parking, which cause concerns for taxpayers' citizens. We have, okay, where am I going now? Often, these family homes that are torn down, are left vacant, are torn down, eliminated, and remain neglected for, for two years, undeveloped lots, for years. Example, many on 24th Avenue Northwest. Blanket, blanket upzoning to RCG is not the solution to affordable housing. What we have observed is inner-city developers knocking down single-family homes and bought at approximately 600K and redeveloping multifamily homes, four to six units and more, with diminished square footage at 600K plus. Inner-city developers are the only ones profiting from RCG development. Let's see, city continuously, blah, blah, blah. Blanket RCG rezoning will, will not provide additional affordable housing. The housing report does not, does not provide any statistical numbers to support affordable housing. Council and Administration, do you honestly believe 600K for a multifamily housing unit is affordable? Please, do not, do not let your constituents be blackmailed by the federal minister, Sean Fr, by the federal government for funding. Please stand your ground. Why, why destroy what we already have? Most importantly, please do not take citizens' rights away in voicing what they want or need. Now, if the city really, truly cares about Calgary housing, they should take the 87 billion from the Climate Emergency Plan and build 174,000 homes at $500,000 apiece. Thank you very much. Any questions?
We'll do questions at the end of the, at the end of the panel, Gianna. So, the next speaker is Philip Turnbull.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chair Penner.
All right, hi, thanks. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead, you have five minutes.
Oh, not yet.
Perfect, thank you.
There's somebody else, somebody else to speak.
So, yeah, I've listened to most of the panels for this meeting over the past couple of days, and first, I just wanna say, thank you for your patience, it's past nine o'clock on a Friday, and the work isn't even done as we go into the weekend. So, thank you for the long days and the time away from your families. I sincerely hope that you all, you all are able to get out for a quick break and enjoy some of this last summer weather over the weekend. There's probably not much new I can say that you haven't already heard in 40 panels and 150 speakers, but I'll try to add just a little bit. So, I could talk about how I own a single detached house in an inner-city community in Counselor Wong's world. My community has been redeveloping, and I could tell you how I want to see diversity and vibrancy in the inner-city and in my community. I could tell you about how my community needs more people to support the small businesses and create that vibrancy on our main street. And, you know, in the first day, there was a few sessions where there was talk about local ice cream shops, and unfortunately, in my community, the local ice cream shop had to pick up and move to a different community, because we didn't have the retail space that they needed on our so-called Main Street. That shouldn't have to happen. Today, I heard a few individuals calling for the right to control what their neighbor does with their property. And response to that, I'd like to suggest that you consider, a great quote today in a Max Fossett piece, that you might have read, where he said, "Buying a house doesn't include the right to encase the neighborhood in amber and stop change if it upsets your aesthetic sensibilities." Change is going to happen in cities. But anyways, the point that I wanna make here is that individuals do still have a voice. Even if you accept these recommendations and implement the strategy, community members have a voice at the development permit stage. That C in RCG stands for contextual, and if it's not contextual, community members should raise those concerns. So, it's not like RCG, its base zoning shuts all of that out. It seems to me that there's a concern about not being heard, so a question I'd maybe submit for your consideration is whether that development permit process needs to be tweaked with these changes so that people do have that opportunity to feel heard and raise concerns about developments in their community. Maybe that's something that you could direct Administration to evaluate. I've also heard concerns that developers don't create affordable housing. That's true, but other recommendations in the policy specifically address affordable housing, and the RCG recommendations, from my interpretation, are aimed to create more supply. And I'm no economist, but I do remember how supply and demand curves work from ECLON 101 in university, and more supply is going to bring down prices. But really, what I've heard from all of these individuals is fear. Fear of change, and fear often makes you freeze and do nothing. And this housing crisis requires that we rise above that fear and take action. And anyways, is there really that much difference between a brand-new, single-detached home with a three-car garage versus an RCG house on the same lot? Because as far as I can tell, the only difference is that the RCG home has more doors, and to me, doors just really aren't that scary. But the other thing that I'd like you to consider, and that really struck me as I listened over the past two days, was the diversity of Calgarians that have signed up to speak to you. The vast majority of them have asked you to approve this strategy, from nonprofits, the business community, developers, individuals of all walks of life, and socioeconomic status. And let's not forget that this is supported at a federal level from both federal, from both conservative and liberal parties. And failing to move this strategy forward puts those federal dollars at risk. And, you know, as a separate note, have the conservatives and liberals ever agreed on anything else in the past decade? But I'm getting a bit sidetracked. Let's be leaders, Calgarians have spoken loud and clear. The people have elected you, and we've put our trust in you to provide leadership for the city. So, let's be leaders, let's be leaders in this province, let's be leaders in this country, let's show the rest of the country that Calgarian can do attitude and entrepreneurial spirit that we're so proud of. Please vote for all of the recommendations and adopt the entire strategy as one. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Kyle, before we come to you, we just have a couple procedural motions just because of the time of night. So, we have one procedural motion, just to suspend procedure bylaw. So, pursuant to the, I can't even read that far, oh my goodness. Yeah, that we're just gonna, in order to finish hearing from the public, so someone wanna move this? Counselor Walcott, thanks. Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, that is carried. Do we need to do anything about the evening recess?
The evening recess will now be, essentially, at your call.
Okay, okay, this, this covers it?
Yes.
Perfect. One, that's why they are clerks, they're so good at what they do. If we're gonna clap for anyone, we're gonna clap for clerks. That's right. Okay, Kyle Parrott, go ahead.
Hello, I feel honored to be the last one in this long list-
Hello, I feel honored to be the last one in this long list of many, many people speaking. So I just want to start by saying that I'm sitting in my backyard here in varsity acres, and I'm in a community that's primarily single-story bungalow houses. And I have done some developments, and a property that recently sold had an RCG development done on a 50-by-120 lot, and I can say with absolute certainty that there's a massive difference between this bungalow and the RCG that was developed on a property that I own. So I'm a professional real estate investor. I've offered Airbnb boarding homes, basement suites, two- and three-bedroom apartments, and single-family homes. I've lived in Calgary since 2003. With that, I'm here to oppose three recommendations put forward by Council. First, upzoning to RCG. Second, removal of minimum parking requirements. And third, removal of public review period for developments. Calgary neighborhoods each have their own unique character and history, and these characteristics are often tied to the scale and design of residential properties. Implementing a blanket upzoning policy that eliminates public hearings risks undermining these communities' identities. Public hearing allows residents to voice their concerns and help shape the future of their neighborhoods, ensuring that any changes line with the characteristics, the values, the characteristics of the values. Any developers who tell you that affluent neighborhoods are safe from development because the economics don't work are simply lying. The increased lot size in wealthier communities combined with 60% lot coverage that RCG provides means that higher-end communities will likely be the first targeted by the development industry. Not only that, but market. Sorry, one second, I'm outside. I don't know if you can hear that. Blanket upzoning to RCG involves increasing building height to nearly 40 feet and lot coverage to 60%. This can have significant negative environmental consequences. Collared buildings cast larger shadows, potentially impacting green spaces and access to natural light for existing residents. Increased lot coverage reduces the tree canopy, contributes to urban heat shield, and hinders rainwater absorption, exacerbating flood risks which Calgary already suffers from. Increasing building height and lot coverage also places additional strain on city infrastructure, including sewer transportation and utilities. At this time, people are making the assumption that these developments will be evenly distributed throughout the city. This is simply not the case. Certain areas and lots will be snapped up and developed first. Do we know what areas those are? Can city infrastructure handle a surge of development in an unexpected area? Finally, while it may be most expensive on a per-square, it may be most, it may be more expensive on a per-square-foot basis to build a high-density tower, however, sorry. Finally, while it may be most expensive on a per-square-foot basis to build high-density buildings, basically what I'm trying to say there is that large towers can have smaller units and so they're cheaper, even though it's more expensive on a per-square-foot basis, they're cheaper units because they're smaller. These buildings' exteriors are also managed by condo associations. It has minimal negative impact on the communities, maintains parks and green spaces, adds houses to the housing stock, and reduces the average home price of the city. Blanket upzoning may spawn a mass of one specific type of development and will likely actually end up slowing down housing completions because so many individual projects are consuming the already taxed industry. Calgary's a boom-bust city, and this may end up resulting in a housing market collapse if the oil markets, interest rates, and markets in general take an unexpected turn right after this wave of property owner exuberance and development irreversibly transforms our city. It's just too out of control. My recommendation is to scrap citywide blanket upzoning, work with the communities, and use the local area plan. Perhaps it is possible to ask the communities to recommend an equivalent density increase that would be better suited for their area. This would result in a truly diverse housing options. Mobile homes, high-density apartment towers, and basement suites would maintain the current housing stock and may be a better option in some regions of the city. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Cal, for being with us here tonight. Counselor Carr, you have questions for this panel?
I'm struggling to do this or not, but I do have two questions to ask, and you know what? I'm gonna go to Ms. Cassell, if she's still on the line.
I'm there.
My two questions are, number one, you spoke to this blanket upzoning eliminating rights. Can you please explain to me how giving people more options for what they can do with their properties eliminates rights?
I think you missed my point, Counselor Carr. What I meant is, part of this report is planning to take away public hearings and taking away the rights of individual property owners to speak on what happens within the city. So that's what I was speaking of.
This gives people the right to do things, individual property owners the rights to do things with their building, with their properties that they don't currently have. So you're talking about the right of other people to tell individual property owners what to do?
No, no, I'm talking about taking away the rights of individuals by eliminating public hearings. That's what I was talking about.
This is giving them rights. Okay, it's an interesting point. My other question is, you spoke a lot of angst and anger about the federal liberals' position on what's before this council. Do you have similar feelings about the conservative shadow ministers' position on what's before this council?
So is my response or feelings relevant to what we're speaking of today? Is it relevant? My feelings?
You spoke at length about the federal government's position on this, I'm asking.
I spoke shortly about Sean Fraser's letter that he sent to the City of Calgary. That's what I spoke about.
And I'm asking about your feelings about Scott Atchison, the federal conservative shadow ministers' letter. If you would be willing to share your feelings about that, but if your position is that your feelings are not relevant, I'm willing to accept that as well.
Well, like, really, may I ask your feelings on either of Scott Atchison or Sean Fraser? May I ask your feelings? Are you willing to voice your feelings on either of the above?
Yeah, it is my job to voice my feelings, but not at a question from you, it's my job after this public hearing.
So I will actually, just as the chair, I will intervene, Ms. Cassell. We actually cannot take questions from the public, that's actually part of procedure bylaw, so I trust that in good time Counselor Carr will answer those questions and debate over the next day.
I look forward to my opportunity, Ms. Cassell. This is not it. Wait for it.
Okay, and that's all good, and I appreciate and respect what you, your ability to answer, and hopefully you will endorse the same for myself.
Well, I'm asking you your question because I'm asking you these questions because I'm interested in your feelings. Madam Chair, I'm wondering...
I'd be happy to discuss this with you on a one-to-one basis. Please feel free to contact me.
Okay, that, thank you for the opportunity. Madam Chair, I'm wondering if this is a good opportunity to potentially enter into the public record Mr. Atchison's letter, maybe for the benefit of those people who don't have it before them.
So I would say I am not sure that Mr. Atchison sent his letter directly to us. Did he? I'm trying to remember. One sec. I'm looking to the mirror because I'm pretty, it would have come into her office.
Yeah, and we were given permission to make it public, and it was also made public by the shadow minister.
It's addressed to Mayor Gondak and members of City Council.
Okay, then yes, then I think it is appropriate that that will be one of the public submissions that we accept into the record. Now, and that is actually, when we did our motion, yes, yesterday, to put all of those public submissions in, did that include ones we've received from the beginning of public until now, or we need to make another motion for that, correct?
We have a separate motion, but I think it's fine for the chair to just direct that. We would need a copy of it, of course, to make sure it's available for the...
I'm wondering...
Okay, like, I was, can Mr. Fraser finish?
Yeah, so we will make a, we will propose a motion for committee's consideration to accept all of the public submissions that were received during the public hearing submission portion of the committee's agenda. But we can just take direction to distribute it this time.
Yeah, so we will add that. Okay, so...
It's in the package already. It's already there.
Madam Chair, I'm wondering if I can just read it out loud?
No, you cannot, because we're actually asking questions of the presenters right now, so no, we can't read it out. So, do you have questions for any of the other presenters, Counselor Carr?
No, I do not.
Okay, then we are on to Counselor Chabot.
Yeah, no, I don't really have much of a question other than the last presenter. Mr. Kyle Parrott, something you said in your presentation kind of tweaked something in my mind. Did you submit something publicly to us as part of our package?
I did not submit anything as part of the package, but I did send two emails. One of the emails showed currently available units that are on the market that are in the price point that would be considered affordable housing. And then it also showed two currently available units that are on the market right now on MLS that are RCG. And those were selected as being typically available units, so the two somewhat affordable or at least accessible to most people were like condo units, basically, one- and two-bedroom condo units. And then I also showed you guys RCG, and I think this has been alluded to many times in this, that RCG units, I mean, I'm yet to see an RCG unit come on the market that's under, say, 550,000-ish price point, and most of, if not all, what I've seen have been in the mid to high 600s. Someone had, there was a guy earlier today, his name was Mike, he was a designer, not a builder or a developer, he was a designer, and he alluded to the fact that he could produce units in the 300 to 600,000 dollar price point. I personally, as a real estate investor who has been in developing in the past, find it extraordinarily unlikely that anyone's gonna be developing anything that's RCG that's gonna be in the 600,000 dollar price point.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's only...
I think he referred to the possibility of something that he was actually working on. He didn't say that he actually had produced anything at this point. No, I was just trying to remember, I know Mr. Peter Collins had submitted something to us, something you said tweaked something as far as some of the stuff I read. It's primarily the reason I was asking the question, but thank you for elaborating.
Yeah, problem. I also had submitted some photos of what a 50-by-120 RCG unit looks like. They're very, very tall and big.
Okay, thank you for being here today and for presenting.
Okay.
No problem.
That wraps up questions of this panel. I am putting one more call. Is there anyone on the phone bridge whose names I have not called? Okay, so the public hearing portion of this committee meeting is now closed, so that means we're not taking any more speakers on this item. When we return tomorrow morning, we will go through questions of Administration. I posed to all of you earlier today that we work sort of in sections where you get kind of five minutes to ask questions, and we'll move on to the next person, and that will kind of give us a bit of fairness in asking questions, so think on that overnight. Mr. Fraser, would you like to make that motion right now to accept those submissions into the corporate record? Or would you like to just do that first thing in the morning when we resume?
We can get that on the screen right now.
Okay, and while we're waiting for that, Counselor, I believe Counselor's first question?
Counselor Penner, can you just repeat what you just said? We have five minutes. That was my rap. It's rapping while I was here. Five minutes. You're sorry, I'm tired.
Five minutes per section?
No, I'm sorry, that didn't come out right. So, procedure bylaw conventionally, right, like at questions of committee, you can ask as many questions as you want for as long as you want, but I think because we're all very interested in this and we all have questions, I think out of respect for fairness, that we'll set a timer, you can ask questions for five minutes. Administration, of course, can take their long, and then we'll move to the next person, but then people can have multiple turns.
Oh, so like, okay, and that's all I need to know, because you said five minutes per section.
You get five minutes with the talking stick, and then we're passing it to the next person.
Can you repeat that tomorrow morning when I'm awake?
I am bringing full teacher mode tomorrow, yes, I am. Okay, yeah, we'll repeat that in the morning. Well, now, now that motion is ready. Can I get someone to move this? Counselor Pootmans, thank you so much, and this is just any of the submissions that we have received throughout the last two days will be in the corporate record. There was over 150 speakers who have come out over the last two days. There have been some incredible heartfelt stories. We have heard facts, we have heard figures, and we have heard feelings, and it has been both heartbreaking and encouraging simultaneously for me as chair of this committee. I will see you. Counselor Chabot.
Thank you very briefly, Madam Chairman. There were some submissions that occurred, paper copies that were handed out while I was not present. Is it possible for me to get copies of those from the clerks?
Through the chair, Counselor Chabot, anything that has been distributed on paper, we have, and a lot of it has already been scanned and distributed. There may be some pieces that we still need to follow up on, given the volume of submissions, but I can assure you that everything that we have received on paper will be scanned and distributed to members of council and the public through there.
Thank you very much for that answer.
Counselor Chabot, I'll give you mine. I like digital things. All right, great, pass them down. With that, we will see you all tomorrow mor- oh! Just a voice vote, oh! All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, that is carried. Tomorrow morning at 9:30.